Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 15th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may hold remote participation at public meetings until June 30th, 2027 by mass general law. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. Since we have remote members, we'll do a roll call vote. When I say your name, please say here for the record. Julie Morgan?
Yes.
Michaela Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Adam Rosenbloom?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the citizens of the Republic of Georgia stands for our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with correspondence. Michaela?
All correspondence will be recorded. An email from Ms. Kayla Worland dated May 7th, 2025 regarding the student lead event Jam for Food held at the Adult Center on May 5th.
All right, thank you. And next we move on to approval of minutes. We have a recommended motion.
I vote that the school committee approve the minutes to the April 29th, 2025 school committee meeting as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Here.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. All right, that brings us to business with guests. We have our Student Advisory Council here this evening. We'll invite Ms. Drowick, Assistant Principal at Long Meadow High School, to come on up with members of the assistant, or the Student Advisory Council.
So they have a few celebrations today, so they're going to celebrate a few things for you.
One more seat down here if anybody wants to. Or you can pull up additional wood chairs from the back, whatever. Feel free to pull up some chairs. There you go.
And you guys, I'll just sit with that.
Take it away. Whenever you're ready. All right.
All right, guys, this is our five-star council award that was presented to us for gathering and completing to all the obligated meetings this year.
Well done. Thank you.
This is our Book of Excellence. It was my job to kind of chair this. Essentially what it is, is a record of all of Long Meadow High School's student council achievements, specifically those run by the executive board. And we presented this at the conference at Hyannis over spring. Yeah. And it won us...
I have it here. It won us the Gold Council Excellence Award, so we are...
Well done.
I'm your Black Senior and it comes on a C level.
Well done.
And we also got recognized at a national level as well.
My goodness.
On a more spotlighted note, we got the opportunity to recognize somebody that is often unheard of and not really applauded as much. You know, behind the scenes, she does everything for our school essentially, and our school runs specifically on this individual. So, you know, we got to recognize Francesca for the Unsung Hero Award at the state conference, which is very exciting.
Commonwealth Awards, who was going to talk about that?
I can do that. So there's also Commonwealth Awards that are awarded to students for each school at this conference. And for our school, we have Kate Carnahan, who was awarded the Commonwealth Award, Colby Mackey, who's also here, and Anna Antonoglu, she can be here with us, but she was our E-Board President this year.
Well done.
Well done, well done. You guys mind if we pause and back up and just do some introductions for anybody that might be watching? Francesca? It's okay. Francesca, you want to kick it off?
Hi, I'm Francesca. I'm a senior. And yeah.
I'm Kate Carnahan. I'm a junior.
I'm Caitlin. I'm a senior.
I'm Travella. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Colby. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Alyssa. I'm a senior.
I'm Adele, and I am a senior here as well.
I'm Dan Carnahan, a junior.
So we have another really big announcement because Kate Carnahan ran for state president, and she was elected. So she is the state president for student councils for the whole state now.
First in school history?
Oh, yes. First gold council and all of those.
First ever.
All of these are firsts.
Except the five-star council award we got last year. Last year we got Commonwealth Awards, but this is the first year they submitted the Book of Excellence, which takes a year or two complete, and a lot of hours of typing and revising and editing. So that led us to the Gold Council of Excellence Award, which there's three different levels of it, and we got the highest tier. And then they also submitted for the National Council of Excellence, which we received. They learned a lot through this process, so they learned that one of the gaps that they have as a council is community outreach and community service and civic engagement. So you might have seen them at the town meeting, because one of the things they want to do is to be a student government. They need to know civic governance, so they're kind of working on that angle a little bit more. So you'll see them a little bit more out in the community, but I'm really proud of them. They are very humble, so they don't celebrate themselves very much. I do. I say that they wear their superhero capes under their clothes, but I'm just so thankful that they're a part of us, that they take on the challenges and opportunities that are presented, and they attend the conferences, and they lead this school, our community, and the state well. And I'm still looking forward to what Kate does for our state because it's amazing when that happens. And she, the conference was amazing. Her delegation, so there were 16 students campaigning for her, it was amazing. And they did a lip sync at the conference.
Not that I would know, but what song?
Please stop the music.
It was a lot of fun, so as you were having meetings here, if you heard some music down in the back, and that was us practicing. But I just want to thank them for just taking the opportunities. And then they have a couple more words.
We wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to have opportunities like this to go to MASC, WMASC events, because they help grow us as a school and as leaders.
They're really enlightening opportunities. I think we all learned a lot about what it means to be a student leader and like to be a good person in general, and it was amazing to like meet new people from all across the state. And so thank you very much for allowing us to do so.
To add on to that, speaking from experience, you know, I'm not sure you guys are aware of how I got into student council, but Ms. Drowick kind of like strongly encouraged me from saying go to the cameras. I don't want to say forced, because I consented to it. But you know, since then, I have never really looked back as an individual. You know, at first I didn't see the importance of student councils and why it was important to foster inclusive communities as a young individual, but now I see how imperative it is to have these conferences where you can go and express yourself and thrive in all the different visions of the graduate. And be, you know, truly yourself. I know we all can agree that at MASC, we didn't have to pretend that we were somebody else. We didn't have to worry about cliques because everybody was accepted, everybody was, you know, a team. I personally just stepped down from the board, unfortunately. You know, I do feel washed up, but you know, I'm very, I'm encouraged that the people that come after me will step up and do even more than what I could do. And I think I'll eternally be grateful for these opportunities, and I'm grateful that Ms. Drowick will continue to strongly encourage those to come. So yeah.
And just for reference, Adele, because she is humble, last year, you may have remembered her as being elected as the Western Mass President. So at that, she led the region and then also served on the state board along with Zainav Sheek. So the two of them served well. Those were our first two students on the state board. So it wasn't that you stepped down, it was your time.
Your time is...
Yeah, you're graduating. It's time to bring your skills to college. But we have amazing leaders here, and they are shining the spotlight on others so that they're also learning to lead and doing that transformational leadership. And we're excited. We have a lot of talent here, and they bring it to us. So thank you for letting us do this. Thank you for giving us permission, and thank you for celebrating with us, because it's a huge accomplishment and a lot of talent that they brought.
Amazing.
Thank you guys so much for everything that you bring to the community every day, all the leadership that you have brought, and the example you're setting for the students coming up behind you, and for our seniors who are heading off, if not wait to hear what you bring to your next adventures with your leadership potentially. You've done amazing work over the last few years, so thank you to all of you for the time and the energy you've put into it, and thank you to Ms. Drowick and the other faculty who've supported you along the way. We're really super proud of you. Well done.
May I have a couple questions?
Yes, absolutely.
So a question for Kate and Colby. I'll start with Colby. If I were to open the binder, and like there's a table of contents there, highlight some of the activities that are captured in that binder for us.
So we have a whole bunch. One of my personal favorites is the pep rally. So the pep rally is in there. We used it for, I think, one major indicator, and then we also, we had another activity that happened during the pep rally, which we used for another indicator. What else is in there? There's, what was the turkey one? I can't remember.
Shaken Tail Feather.
Shaken Tail Feather. So we had like one of our fundraisers for student council in there, and we have a whole bunch of other really fun stuff.
Yeah, we talk about how we're a unified school in it and how that plays a factor into like one of the indicators. It essentially, how it works is however many indicators you have, that's like, it's a point system, so the more points you get, the closer you are to getting that gold. So yeah, we talked about how we're a unified school, just other activities that we do. The community outreach, as Ms. Drowick was saying, we're trying to grow that category for us, getting more volunteer opportunities in, and just stuff like that. So things that we do in our school to kind of bring everybody together and show that we're one.
And you usually sort of have to provide some information or context, so like for the unified school, we attended a unified bocce event in January as a council up under two.
Can you explain what unified means?
It's usually sort of a combination of like student leaders, whatever, with people who have mental disabilities, and we get to play games. So there's a bunch of programs of the Unified Sports in Massachusetts. The bocce event, the track team, the MIA has a basketball program. Yeah, there's all sorts of programs we get to participate in.
Yeah, I really commend all of you for embracing Unified Sports at Long Meadow High, and it's really added a dimension of inclusivity to an already inclusive school, so it's very cool. And then my other question was for Kate. So presumably you had to offer your platform to all the students across the state and talk about some of your goals for MASC. Would you be able to explain some of the ideas you have as you take over the presidency?
So I guess one of my biggest points was expanding MASC. I think Adele said it really well. It's such a welcoming and inclusive place, and I think that expanding it to more schools and opening that opportunity up and just trying to get its name out there even more was something that was really important to me, and I think Long Meadow specifically, because before Ms. Drowick came here and presented this opportunity to us, we'd never been to any MASC or WMASC events. So if it wasn't for her bringing that to us, I wouldn't have had this opportunity. None of us would have had the opportunity that we had to go to these events and develop our skills as leaders. So I think that was my biggest goal going into it. Recently, we had our first meeting where all of the leaders that got elected onto the state board, we got to talk about all of our different ideas and goals for the upcoming year. So I'd say another one is talking more about mental health and having that as an aspect, similar to how Special Olympics is a part of MASC. We wanted to bring Kyle's Cares, which is another program advocating for mental health awareness into the mix as well.
Good luck to you as you start your presidency. Very exciting.
Any comments or questions from folks at home?
I just wanted to say something. So I have had the honor to work with all of you for the past few years, maybe just this year, but it's really been such an important community for me, and I really just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. You really do feel like a second family, and I'm so proud to be a part of this. And then to touch on our seniors, I've been so impressed by Adele's leadership on, at the regional level. I think she's really inspiring. I appreciate your charisma and your positivity. And then same goes for Alyssa at the high school. She really just brings so much energy to everything she does, and I think that's something we can really all use in our lives. And then Caitlin, I really appreciate how organized you are and how you, no, you really are. You feel like you bring, you can kind of bring the energy level down a little bit. You get us all relaxed. Yeah, and you're just really awesome to work with. And then Francesca, I actually had the honor of writing a letter of recommendation for Francesca for the Unsung Hero Award, and it was one of the greatest honors I've had all high school, just because she really does go the extra mile in everything she does. So she's the treasurer of the senior class, which may not have, you know, the most glamorous title, but she really is always behind the scenes doing everything. I take a few classes with Francesca, and whenever we're not doing work in those classes, she's always working on student council activities, trying to make sure everything's organized and ready to go, especially even in these final weeks when many people are getting ready to relax. She's still going really hard since we have so many important...
Get your prom tickets in there due tomorrow.
So really, just thank you so much. I'm sure I'll get to say some other stuff at our meeting next Friday, but really, you guys do mean the world to me.
Andrew?
I think we all want to say you mean the world to us too. Andrew's an incredible part of the student council at LHS, and I know he does an amazing job serving with you guys in the school committee, but he also does such a great job as a student leader at LHS, whether it's through sports or just everyday life. He's always really kind, inclusive, welcoming, has a great positive attitude, and so we love you just as much as he loves us.
This is a great celebration. I'm so glad you got them to bring everybody here.
I know folks at home are waiting. I'm going to start with Julie, because I saw a couple of kids go up. Julie, come check in.
I'm so slow with the mute button in these meetings. It really like, I just want you to know that at home, it's like a copy of errors, like in the meeting, I'm muting myself. But I just wanted to say thank you so much to you all for coming and talking to us today. It's so impressive to hear what you all are up to and so inspiring. I don't think I was quite as organized and, you know, ambitious as a high school student, and it's really cool to see what you all have done in with the Long Meadow High School is building for our students. So thanks so much.
All right, thank you. And Michaela?
Hi, congratulations, everybody. Hi, Francesca.
Hi, how are you?
I'm sad I'm not there in person, but really sick. And I think I saw a lot of you at the town meeting, and I have to add on that I'm sure many of you I know here are involved in the community, but Francesca was at every single swim meet all winter long, even though we were at a different pool in Springfield, even sometimes after her own practice, and even after apparently everything she did for student government and school. So I'm sure everybody else that I don't know has done similar things, and I'm super grateful to work for you guys and live in a community with you and support you, and congratulations on all your achievements.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, well, that was a lot of awards, and we're really, really proud of you all, and thank you so much for coming out tonight and sharing all of this with us. We're wishing everybody well as they move on. I know I've got lots of familiar faces. Very happy to see you all. Not surprised by all of the wonderful things you've accomplished, and appreciate you stepping up and leading throughout our community, and excited to see where you go next and how the community service piece of things builds. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Drowick. Well done. All right, that's a hard act to follow. We're going to head into school committee announcements and recognitions. A couple of quick things for the chair report. The first, to extend our thanks to all of the town staff, elected and appointed boards, students, student groups, Girl Scout groups, Boy Scout groups, and our town moderator, Rebecca Townsend, for the town meeting that we had on Tuesday of this week. There's a lot of preparation and collaboration that goes into town meeting, and we are very appreciative of the work that everybody does there. Also a reminder that we have elections coming up on Tuesday, June 3rd. There are three positions open for school committee. Two of them are three-year terms and one two-year term, so everybody make sure you get out and vote on Tuesday, June 3rd. And then a final note of thanks also to Senator Jake Olivera, who has secured $75,000 worth of funding for Long Meadow Public Schools as part of the supplemental budget that's currently under consideration in the state senate. This funding, if approved, will be for district-wide security system upgrades and will definitely be much appreciated. So thank you to Senator Olivera for his continued advocacy and support for our public schools. Any other school committee announcements or recognitions? All right, seeing none, we'll head into reports. Superintendent Report.
Briefly, busy end of the year. May is a busy, busy time for fun and busy time for families and students and staff, and just want to acknowledge all the amazing efforts that the staff puts together for end-of-year events. The field days, the field trips, the plays, the performances, the poetry out loud contests, the action civics projects, so much that we can be proud of, and so many opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning in real, authentic, VOG-aligned ways. So just really want to highlight and underscore that. So grateful for all the work that often comes together in these culminating events in May. And of course, we have graduation on the horizon and other exciting senior events, so looking forward to a great conclusion to the school year.
Yep. All right, additional reports. I think the only one for tonight is SEAL. Michaela?
Actually, last night, the SEAL meeting was canceled, so there's no more SEAL meetings for the school year, but obviously reach out anytime to Diane or Meg from CO, follow them on Facebook, look out for anything, obviously reach out anytime to Nicole Paris Crowell or me. There's a lot of people that want to help all the kids out, and the meet and greet will be in September, and it's a really great time to come down and meet people face-to-face. It's down at Bus Park, and it's a really great event, so look out for that in September.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. And student representative report. Andrew?
Perfect. So I have Danica here with me tonight, and she'll start us off.
So to start us off, we had our spring elections for all the class council positions. They went really well. All the speeches were great, really impressive. And then we also have our, the LHS Spring Music Show tonight. I know that they've been preparing really hard for it, and I'm sure it'll go amazing.
Thank you. And then on Tuesday, the 20th, we have our LHS art show, which is mainly taking place in like sort of the lobby area in front of the auditorium at the high school. And I know that art students have also been preparing a lot for this, so we're really excited for them to get to show off their art. And then an athletics update, so we're getting ready to move into the playoffs. Some have already started, so good luck to all of our athletes competing in that. And then in terms of senior night, softball is tonight, and boys tennis is also tonight, in addition to a variety of others that have been taking place and will take place. And then on May 2nd, Friday, we had our High Meadow Senior Picnic, which was really enjoyable. I know Dr. O'Shea has described it as a really great event where we all get to kind of come together and a lot of those cliques drop, and I couldn't agree more with that. It was a really fun sunny day. It was almost 80 degrees, which is unheard of in early May, as you know.
The weather worked out.
Yeah, it did. And then on Friday, the 9th, the juniors had their spring fling where they got to, at the Elks Lodge in Springfield, where they got to enjoy a night of dancing and music. That was really fun for them. And then we've had a variety of senior capstone events taking place throughout the month of May. I was lucky enough to attend Rebecca Malapa's event on Friday in the library, and she got to talk about diabetes and her research on type 1 and type 2 diabetes. And then any high school parents or students can look out, or an email already sent from Mr. Landers, which has a list of all the capstone events. And then just another reminder, as Francesca said, to buy your prom ticket if you haven't already. Last city that is tomorrow, prom is June 5th at the Log Cabin, and then graduation is June 10th at St. Neil.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Do you want to introduce Danica about her position now?
Yes. Danica will be the student representative next year.
Wonderful. Welcome, Danica.
Congratulations.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. We're headed into subcommittee reports. Thank you all. We do not have a finance sub-report, policy sub?
Happy to take this one. No action needed tonight. There are two policies out for public comment. One is policy ADF relating to wellness, and the other is JLJC relating to the administration of medications to students. So the school committee will consider those at your May 27th meeting.
All right, perfect. Thank you. And then we do not have any other subcommittee reports, other than that evaluation will be meeting on May 23rd at 3:30 PM. That brings us to ongoing business and a middle school building project update.
Sure. We had a information table at town meeting, and we were able to share with many, many town residents a new information flyer that we put together, and so hopefully that's a helpful way for parents to understand, community members to understand the project and the components. We successfully submitted the schematic design to the MSBA, so that really puts us on the road to identifying the full project scope and budget. The schematic design includes the floor plan, the space summary, and that space summary is a detailed listing of all the rooms and the purposes and the square footage and the adjacencies, so another major milestone in the rearview mirror. And we're looking ahead to residents considering the full project scope and budget at the September meeting's votes that you mentioned earlier. So I'm really pleased that when I think back over the many years that we've been involved with this project, that we've been able to hit really every milestone as planned and as scheduled and successfully with the MSBA. So things are still, continue to move in the right direction with the project.
All right, great. Some community events upcoming between now and then, and in the meantime, folks can check the website. We have an FAQ that is continuing to grow as more information comes in. All right, other ongoing business is related to school choice. So when we had our school choice, our school committee meeting on March 11th, we voted to accept three students in grade 5 through the school choice program. We have a recommended update from Dr. O'Shea.
Sure. Yeah, we'd asked the committee to consider accepting one additional school choice seat in grade 5 for entrance in the 25, 26 school year. We have this opening, given that one of the, one of the students previously accepted has become regularly enrolled in Long Meadow Public Schools, and so recommending to the school committee that you consider adding one additional school choice seat, grade 5, for next year.
All right. Any questions and/or possible motions related to that?
I vote that the school committee open one additional school choice seat in grade 5 for entrance in the 2025, 2026 school year.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Same again.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Here.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. All right, that brings us to new business and the superintendent's end-of-year annual plan report.
Sure, yeah. This is the time of year where I, like every other educator in the district, will experience a summative evaluation, or most educators will experience a summative evaluation. And so in your meeting packet is a detailed narrative reflection, and I also provided to the school committee a reflection on each of my annual goals. Those are the goals that were set as part of my annual plan back in September or early October. And so the evaluation subcommittee is scheduled to meet May 23rd, and so the hope would be that we... And so the hope would be that the individual committee members could complete their individual evaluations, submit those to Diane. And then what typically happens is the evaluation subcommittee creates a sort of synthesized summary recommended evaluation for the whole committee to consider. And so...
I'll just pause you there to just send a quick reminder to folks that those completed evaluations are going to be due by the end of day on Tuesday, May 20, so that they're ready for the subcommittee to meet on the 23.
And so there's, like I said, some detailed reflections and a narrative in your, in your meeting packet. But just as a quick overview, I just have a few slides that I wanted to share. It is important that the evaluation of a superintendent in Massachusetts be conducted as a, as a public event. And so, oops. So I'll just share an overview of some of my reflections on the annual plan. Just give me one second. So some of the things that have been major reflection of my, of the goals and projects for the year included the middle school, the development of a new three-year district improvement plan, the progress we've made relative to collective bargaining with all seven bargaining units. And I think a really firm and reinvigorated focus on student safety and well-being. And then I can share some thoughts on some of the curriculum renewal work that we've done, some of the curriculum coordination that has happened as well. So again, briefly, this is not news necessarily to the committee, but a summary of some of the work that's been done in connection with the middle school project. And I'll pause for a minute and say that though this is a reflection of my annual plan, the truth is, all of these things happen as a result of the team of administrators that I'm surrounded by, the support of Diane as executive, my executive assistant, and frankly, the work of hundreds of educators and staff members across the district. So this is really, you know, my work is the work of our educators and the work of our educators is my work. So we share in our commitment to so many of these things. The middle school project, the education plan that was submitted back in September as part of the PSR phase, the space summary, including the file site and floor plans, the schematic design that we mentioned earlier. I'm really proud of how we have built consensus on the project. I feel like there's some wind in our sails as we prepare for the September votes. We've worked hard as a building committee, as an administrative team, to educate the public on the project and explain the benefits and the needs of the project as well. Most recently, we submitted a special education methodology statement to DESI. And this was before the MSBA will establish and vote on the project's scope and budget. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has to review our special education delivery methodology for the proposed middle school. And so once DESI reviews that and provides feedback, that will lead us towards the full consideration of the schematic design. So that was, you know, that report that we submitted was a reflection of frankly, a couple of years' worth of planning and thought and feedback as we think about how this building can create the type of inclusive environment that we're looking for, the type of environment that will support special education students for decades to come. Beyond the middle school project, I'm pleased and proud of the development of our district improvement plan. I think it charts a course for us for the next three years. It was, there were many inputs into the development of that plan, including staff and community survey, focus groups. We reviewed DESI standards for district effectiveness. We had a school committee retreat earlier in the year. And of course, we looked at a lot of the data that's available to help us identify how we can better support students. And so I'm pleased that we have established a roadmap for the years ahead with a strong focus on curriculum renewal, strong focus on student safety and well-being, and a strong focus on creating inclusive learning environments. So I'm also really pleased that we have been able to sort of get all of our strategic arrows pointed in the right direction. I think the goals of the district improvement plan are reflective of the goals and direction of the school committee. And they're also reflected in individual school improvement plans as well. In the area of curriculum instruction, the adoption of CKLA, our elementary literacy curriculum, has been, have you left it? A lot of credit to Beth Nelson for the critical leadership she provided in this area. And really grateful for the way our educators have embraced that program and really made it work for students locally here. We started down the road towards the implementation of Panorama. This is a data platform that will help us monitor and guide students' academic growth, their social-emotional growth, their behavioral growth. And so we're in year one of the adoption of Panorama. It will be a multi-year journey, but I'm pleased with the progress that we have made. It really is a powerful tool to help align our work and ensure that we are regularly monitoring student progress. And we hope that it continues. We want to continue to work towards Panorama being a place that makes our, our work more efficient and it makes our work more purposeful. Curriculum renewal process, I know this has been a critical direction provided by the school committee that we have an articulated curriculum renewal process. And so one glance at our curriculum website will, will show the curriculum maps that are in place and the five-year curriculum renewal plans that we have ready to go as well. And then another major focus this year for our educators, for our administrators, has been the implementation of the new IEP. And we're really pleased that it's a student-centered process and it gives voice to their goals and ambitions. Student safety and well-being, Yale Ruler. We have been very purposeful about getting to each school to update staff on hate and bias protocols and bullying response protocols. We have reintroduced See Something, Say Something, which as recently as this week proved to be a critical resource to protect student safety. Avoid, Deny, Defend drills. We just completed our spring safety drills. And credit to our partnership with the LPD, LFD, for helping us define those drills. And increasingly, we're interested in encouraging educators to be responsive to safety events based on the best information that is available to them. And Securely Classroom is a Chromebook management tool. It helps us both monitor student Chromebook use but also organize instruction if Chromebooks are being used in a classroom. I'd say, and you know, that last bullet, that is an area that, you know, we have some room to grow in. We want to make sure that our educators understand the potential benefits of the tool. We want to make sure that we support them if they choose to use that to manage and instruct in their classrooms. And so that continues to be an area of focus for us. All of us are on a, you know, improvement journey. We're all actively seeking to grow and get better. I think one of the things that I want to continue to focus on is my active participatory leadership. I want to, you know, make sure that I'm being purposeful about getting into schools and classrooms candidly. It's been a challenge this year with lots on our plates, but it's important for me to be present to our administrators, our educators, and to students. And so I'll continue to work on that. One of the things that I had hoped to get to more purposely this year was our district improvement plan, creating a sort of an accessible image infographic of the district improvement plan so that it becomes noticeable and known to our educators and to the wider community. So that's something that I'll anticipate that I'll roll over into future, future goals and plans. Cell phones, we have, we conducted a fairly ambitious survey of staff and students and staff and parents, rather. Did a focus group with some students that Mrs. Drowick organized. And that was really helpful for me to understand the student perspective. And then Yale Ruler is something that we'll continue to work toward appropriate implementation of. We are in year one with Yale Ruler. And again, that's a multi-year journey to make sure that we're implementing it in ways that match schedules and our capacity and our resources, et cetera, et cetera. Just to back, back up to the cell phones, I do anticipate that we will have some language for the school committee to consider at your May 27 meeting, some adjustments at the high school, middle, and elementary level. So I'm grateful for the support of the school committee. I'm grateful for the clear direction they've provided, me and our administrative team. I'm grateful that we have plans that are in sync, frankly. So we'll have an opportunity. So next step in the process of superintendent evaluation is for the evaluation subcommittee to meet on the 23rd. And then individual evaluations. And then at your next meeting, May 27, you'll have an opportunity to consider a summative synthesized recommendation from that subcommittee. So happy to answer any questions. But I know we'll have an opportunity to do a deeper dive with the evaluation subcommittee as well.
All right, questions to kick us off? Okay, couple of reminders then, that all of the materials related to Dr. O'Shea's evaluation are in the Google Drive. Please look those over and review what you have for you. The evaluation paperwork is also in there. And if anyone has any questions, needs any additional information, would like to see further evidence on something, don't hesitate to reach out to Dr. O'Shea. And we'll look forward to getting all of those in by Tuesday of next week so that we can pull them together into a summative and be prepared to present that to the full committee on the 27th. 27th, yes.
Yep.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Budget reports. Just to note that Mr. Mazza provided some year-to-date FY '25 budget reports and FY '25 revolving account reports. They're informational. They are also in your packets. If you have any questions or any additional information needed from those, you can reach out to Mr. Mazza directly. And that brings us to building use requests. We have one in our packet.
Yeah, one, one...
Oh, I was going to add a recommendation.
I'll tell you, we'll get to it. Trying to find the paper for it. There we go. All right. Take it away. Do you want to explain it?
Not much to explain. This is a request from CAP Kids for the use of the LHS gymnasium on a number of dates that are listed in the building use form that is in your meeting packet. So this has Mr. Mazza's recommendation.
All right, for some sports clinics. Then questions and/or possible motions?
I enthusiastically move that the school committee approve the building use request for CAP Kids for use of the Long Meadow High School gymnasium on a number of dates as outlined on the request form dated April 9th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. The next item on the agenda is the tuition rate request. We are anticipating a request for tuition.
Yep, happy to take that. We have, we are in conversation with a family that resides in Connecticut that will likely be interested in having their student attend Long Meadow High School. Mr. Gant has had put the family in touch with Mr. Landers. He is comfortable and feels that there's plenty of capacity to accept this student on a tuition basis. In the past, the tuition for out-of-state residents has been equal to the district's per pupil expenditure rate. And so if we wanted to follow that past practice, the tuition for out-of-state resident would be $17,275. And that's based on the most recent per pupil expenditure rate available to us.
All right. Any questions related to that? And/or possible motions?
I vote that the school committee set the tuition rate for students residing outside the state of Massachusetts to $17,275 for the 2025, 2026 school year.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. So we'll see if that request comes through. We'll see that on a different night. And next up, full-day preschool tuition. So the school committee has already previously set the half-day preschool rate for the '25, '26 school year to $3,000. We have a possible motion here related to the full-day preschool annual tuition rate.
The recommend... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just going to recommend it. I love full-day preschool. I vote that the school committee set the full-day preschool annual tuition rate to $6,000 for the 2025, 2026 school year.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any additional information or discussion? Did you want to?
No. Well, once the school committee sets the rate, we're prepared to send a letter off to families. We anticipate that there will be considerable interest in the full-day option. And there would be, we would conduct a lottery for interested families. The preference would be given to those who are coming back for a second year preschool with us. So I can tell you that the preschool staff is very excited to offer this option. It's something that's been on their minds for some time.
Any further discussion and/or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, that brings us to one more thing before executive session. I think in my eagerness to get to the student council, folks who are here, I neglected to ask if anyone had any interest in public speak. We do not have anyone online. We do not have anyone here, but just for pro forma, all right? All right. It occurred to me after that, I think I went right by that. I'm just ready to dive into the student council. So that brings us to our final possible recommended motion related to executive session. If someone would like to make that motion? Anyone at all?
I vote that the school...
You go ahead.
Oh, you go. You can do it.
No, it's really fine. I was going to fumble my way through it. Go for it.
I vote that the school committee need an executive session pursuant of Mass. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, purpose to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H and non-union personnel independent contract administrator... contract administrators, and purpose consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
All right. And note that we will be reconvening into open session. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. So we're officially headed into executive session. Thank you. Hang tight, guys. We'll swap some things around.